At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Um, bro call.
Brian, easy.
Present.
Doug?
Present.
And President Pat.
Will be late and Cody?
Present.
For those who are able, please stand and do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, okay. Do we got a virtue card handy there?
You bet.
Okay.
Mr. Yostev, would you do the honors?
Okay, today's virtue is confidence. Confidence, confidence is having faith in someone. Self-confidence is trusting that you have what it takes to handle whatever happens. You feel sure of yourself and enjoy trying new things without letting doubts or fears hold you back. When you have confidence in others, you rely on them. You're practicing confidence when you know you are worthwhile and feel sure of yourself, when you don't let fear, doubt, or worry stop you. When you discover your talents and try new things and learn from your mistakes, think positively and trust that all things work together for good. The affirmation, "I am confident, I appreciate my gifts, and give my best. I enjoy trying new things, I welcome new opportunities." Confidence.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guidelines for the Board of Education. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, do we have any public comments? I don't think we have any public comments this evening. A CWSA update. Year on.
So I just wanted to have me mention that we have, myself and Brian have signed our contract, which is good, until June of 2020. We also signed a MOU among, among understanding for our teacher ratio, student-teacher ratio. So we have that done and taken care of. And then we have, um, our last showcase night is going to be the Thursday before Memorial Day. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. Um, at five to six, so you're all invited if you would like to come see the last showcase for the night, or for the school year. I'm gonna be there trying to recruit some, hopefully, new community members, which would be nice to have a few more. Yeah, so it's been a great year, they've been really doing well and looking for an extra.
Do you have any open, um, governance council positions or anything that's coming up open for the public?
Um, well, yes and no.
Okay.
Um, myself and Richard Green, we're both kind of hanging on because we don't have anyone to replace either of us. So I've committed for another year and he's committed for another year. But we could definitely use some more input into our community members. We could also just use committee members too for our public relations, our academic excellence council. Um, we could definitely use some more people. So if you know anyone that's interested, um, they can contact me and talk to me about it.
I was able to attend last next meeting and I was really excited about your discussion points and, you know, where you're looking at doing some work, uh, more exposure about CWSA and what that has to offer. So I appreciate the opportunity to visit your meeting and I appreciate your time here for the update. And I think that contract right now has been signed off and we're waiting for the approval.
Actually, we got, we got.
Yeah, so that's the other thing. Our contract has been sent to DPI. Um, we wrote the exact verbiage that they wanted to hear from us on certain things and sent it off, so we're waiting to get that back and hopefully it's approved and okay. It's not due until June, so we have a little time. If there's something else they need us to tweak, but hopefully they do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Wise Academy out.
Yes, I'm just calling her up, but could we, could we go on to the overarching results? Mr. Johnson is sneaking in in Megan Kautzer's place, so we're moving Megan down to May. And Keith wants to talk a little bit about future focus, to look at ACT and Aspire and staying future focused in those areas. So if you want to talk a little bit about that, Keith? I tried, give him five minutes, but he's excited.
We did something different this, uh, this year with our ACT Aspire. In the past, we've kind of split it. ACT Aspire is the state-required test for our freshmen and our sophomores. And we, this year, put it all on one day. So it was all this past Monday, this is the future-focused part. And then what we did with our juniors and seniors was we offered a, um, a college visit to both UW-Lacrosse and the Turbo, um, that we had some juniors and seniors that they took that opportunity to go see those campuses. And that was arranged by Maggie Kautzer. Mrs. Kautzer made the arrangements for that visit. But then we also opened up for any students that wanted to do, if they had a job shadow or, um, a job shadow college visit, if they wanted to go to a different campus. We opened up that as a day that, hey, this would be a great day for you to go see a campus that you're looking at. And so really trying to keep a focus on the future and that post-secondary for those juniors and seniors. Our juniors just finished up the ACT, um, a couple of months ago and we're starting to get, we got those results in the individual student reports. We don't have the school, um, report yet. But Susan Baldwin has been doing a lot of work the, over the course of this year in her role as an instructional coach, really putting together that ACT and Aspire data for us and making it very useful for, for us to start looking at trends and also to start disaggregating data, looking at, um, all the various different subgroups. And some of the information that comes to light as you start to pull that data apart has been very eye-opening for us. And so we're continuing to use that to move us forward with student learning as well and really being able to get, use that data in a way that we just simply haven't in the past.
But ACT Aspire, is that state-required testing?
ACT Aspire is state-required, yeah. But at the same time, we're, it's also valuable in that you have ACT Aspire and then ACT is, of course, the test that's required for our juniors. But it also is far and away for the universities and colleges. Our students are looking at, it's the entrance exam. And so really building a lot, um, a lot with that and looking at that post-secondary, what are students going to be doing? And so we continue, we're, you know, we've got, we're busy, we're heading into the busy time of year now where we've got the Top Ten Banquet. I know Deanna had sent out invitations for that. We have the Awards and Scholarship Night coming up. We also have the Reeves Award coming up. And then we have, uh, Project Search graduation on May 29th. And then we also have the High School graduation, 2:00 PM on June 2nd. We have, very well, of course, you always have happy seniors, but this year we have seniors that are looking at all the snow days and the number of days now they'll be done before everyone else. Glee, so.
Some more tactful than others.
Some more tactful than others. But, uh, that's, you know, but really continuing to look at that post-secondary and what happens after high school. And so these are just some of the things that we've had in the last, well, last few days and then the last couple of months as well, so. Any questions or anything that? And then, of course, the job shadowing that Megan will talk about next month.
So I, I also had, uh, Brian and I were talking a little bit about those career pathways. And did you mention that Megan had gone around today?
Oh, Megan today went around and talked to our seniors during advisory. Just identified, okay, so what are your plans post-high school? What are you looking at? Have you been accepted to a school? What, you know, have you accepted an acceptance? And then what are your plans? And so really collecting that. We also are submitting to the, we're contracted with the National Clearinghouse. National Clearinghouse provides, what happens there is thirty-nine hundred colleges and universities submit their data on their students to the National Clearinghouse and then the National Clearinghouse will report to us, okay, here is what your seniors have done. And so what's exciting about using the National Clearinghouse is we're not dependent on students reporting back to us, which happens at varying levels of, um, well, just at varying levels. Some report back, some let us know and some don't let us know. Where now, we're going to be able to, the schools report to the National Clearinghouse, the National Clearinghouse will report to us, here's what your students have done. And actually, eight years back is what we're allowed to go. And so Carolyn Fryder has been working on compiling that data to be able to let us know better, okay? X percent of your students went on to, uh, a university or X percent went to a technical college. And then in year two, this is what happened, you know?
That's gonna be good information.
Pulling apart that to look at, get a better idea of, so what happens to our students after high school? Because we really don't, you know, we really don't have a lot of knowledge other than anecdotal, you know, stories with your back and things like that or students that will come back, so. So, yeah.
Good news.
Anything we have?
Thank you. And is Ms. Carey ready?
Yes, Ms. Carey is on our screen here. Uh, hi, Carey. Uh, the Wise Academy has been, uh, meeting now regularly. We're really starting to get into a routine and, uh, the last couple of Fridays, we've spent some time doing some strategic planning. So Carey's just gonna touch on a few things and certainly you can ask questions of her and, um, I might chime in as well. So Carey, go ahead, good to see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we had two long meetings recently for strategic planning for Wise Academy and, uh, just wanted to tell you some of the things that we worked on. We worked on getting lots of dates on our calendar for ending out this year and then launching next year successfully. We hit on, we're thinking about learning opportunities for, um, all of our kids. And some of those opportunities include field trips or potentially having off-site classes. Off-site being out of people's houses. Not necessarily site of a brick and mortar building there, they keep saying. We discussed, um, taking action and taking action on some things, delivering a higher level of service for parents, which includes things like, um, having mentors to help them go through the process of signing up and going through the, um, on-liking. Terry, what's it called that's going on?
Learning plans. Learning plans.
No, 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 no. How the, how they sign up?
Oh, the enrollment process. Enrollment, open enrollment.
And then having some webinars to help parents know how to successfully navigate, things like graduation or ACT or how to have their kids ready for the forward exam. And then streamlining the ordering process. And then, let's see here, what else? That's all I have.
Well, and one of, well, and since you were here last, we spent extensive, uh, time with Brian Grill, who talked about special ed in the virtual setting. So they really are trying to map out the experience so that we can continue to help our families move forward and support, you know, both the families as teachers because they all, each family's ultimately their child's teacher. So how do we support them? And then also our families have asked, you know, we'd like more field studies, more, more opportunities for our kids to be social, so we're working on that. And our numbers are coming in. I think we're approaching the point where Lynn, we're probably gonna have a lottery. So our, our cap is one fifty and then we're at about one.
I think you're just, I think you're at one fifty.
We're at one fifty, but this year we're at about one twenty-ish, right? So we're adding another thirty kids next year, which is gonna be great.
Lot of open enrollment.
Lot of open enrollment, yep. So it's good news. We're talking about staffing and how to sort through that and so lots of good things that are happening on the, on the Y side. So any questions of Carey?
Uh, no questions, but I just wanna thank you, Carey, for the hard work you're putting in. And we appreciate that. We appreciate that, um, very much, so. We really thank you, yep.
So happy to having you.
Well, thanks for taking five minutes and spending some time with us. See you later. Or do you wanna stay in tune or you're tuning out?
She's turning out.
She's.
I'm, I'm having connection issues, so I'm gonna go.
All right. See ya.
That was fun. That was funny. Uh, thank you, Carey.
And I do wanna say we, we're struggling too with council members, but, so, we're not, you're not alone.
We have a lot more students, so that's kinda.
Yeah. Virtual is a draw, yeah. So thank you.
Um, Mr. Brian Grill, the floor is yours.
All right. Keith kinda mentioned this, I'm gonna be passing around. Project Search sent a invite specifically for the board to come to graduation. So if you look at the picture on there, you'll see some of our NICUSA grads that are part of the program. We are graduating three from Project Search this year. For, do all of you know what Project Search is that we're participating in? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure you have understanding. It's three of our students who require some additional education and vocational education. So they are basically at work for a full year, working in the Aspire's River View Hospital, doing different jobs, having internships, and gaining those job skills. And we do this in collaboration with Wisconsin Rapids, um, the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, ODC, and work on them helping, helping them find jobs. So that way, after this, they become members of just the workforce and get the opportunity to feel independence, potentially find departments and things like that. We've actually have quite a few of our students that have gotten through the program and are now holding either part-time or full-time jobs. So it's been very beneficial and it's a great opportunity for our students. So they invite you to come to the graduation, it's a great event. It's, it's really just a culmination of everything they've gone through education-wise and then job work-wise as well. Um, the last thing I'm working on, as I mentioned to some of you last month, the Civil Rights Data Collection Report is due next week, Thursday. So we're wrapping that up. It's, I owe Diana and Lynn a great deal of thank you for their helping, helping gather some of that data, but we're almost there, so. But that's what I have going on.
Thank you, Brian, and I, I wanna thank you for the time that you've put in over spring break. I drove by here almost every day and your vehicle was here and you were working on that report. So your time, your time is very much appreciated. And you, you know, I, I know you gave up a lot of personal time for that, so thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
That's a huge compliment to what you bring to us, so, thank you. Um, Ms. Lynn Lee?
So my, um, business manager update entailed a lot, so I actually, um, typed up a summary of all the things that I wanted to talk about and it included in your packet, so at least you had time to look at it before we got to the meeting, um, tonight. So I'll briefly go over the three items that I wanted to talk about. The Health Insurance Consortium update. This is our first full year with our Health Insurance Consortium. We are currently with Security Health and, uh, they gave us a preliminary renewal rate, nineteen-twenty, of ten percent. And with our loss ratios, we felt that was, um, just a little too high for us. So the consortium and M3 went back to, uh, to Security Health and asked them to renegotiate or look at the renewal rate again. And, um, they refused. They said that they were gonna stick with the ten percent. So we indicated that we were going to go out for bid for the health insurance because we felt that our loss ratio was good enough that we could get a better rate. So the consortium, uh, voted to go out for bid and, uh, there were four, um, entities that they sent the bid out to. Security Health was also included in the bid. Aspire's Horizon WPS, WEA, and WC, WCA, which is Wisconsin Counties Association. Now, these, um, the bids that were received were an increase of eleven point zero seven percent for Security Health, those they actually went up. Aspire's Horizon WPS was an increase of eleven point eight one percent. WEA was an increase of sixteen point oh five percent. And Wisconsin Counties Association came in and aggregate a negative three point five four percent, so that would be a decrease. Now, this is an aggregate looking at the whole consortium. So when we do the consortium and when we look at our plans, uh, that's when we're individual. So, um, when, uh, when we met again and we went over the bids with our consortium, uh, we were handed out a notebook that pertained just to our personal district. So when I was looking through the renewal rates, um, our district, uh, had a phenomenal loss ratio in, or decrease in this past year. So we did much better. So our, um, decrease for Wisconsin Counties Association was actually eight point zero two. So that is, right now, we have three plans. We have a narrow network, we have a, uh, a high-end plan and then a middle-of-the-road plan. Now, obviously, the high-end plan is gonna see a little bit of a decrease, but I think there's four people on that high-end plan. So, I mean, on our narrow network, I meant. So the narrow network is gonna see the most significant increase because it's so cheap for the narrow network, you can only go to a Marshall Clinic. So there's only like four people that are on the narrow network, so they're the ones that are gonna see an increase in their insurance rate. Uh, the rest of us are going to see a decrease in our insurance rate. So, um, the next steps now are to, um, take care of all the details behind the scenes. We're going to, um, actually sign all the paperwork. We're going to, uh, tell Security Health that we are, um, we are leaving them and, um, then we will work with M3 to communicate the changes to the staff. I think when the staff sees, um, that we worked really hard to work on that decrease, I think they're gonna be pretty happy with it. And with very minimal plan changes. So we're going from three plans down to one again. So everybody's gonna be offered the same plan. So, any questions on the health insurance?
I had a quick question. What, what percent were you guys at last year prior to the eleven percent increase from Security Health?
Um, the de, the increase from the prior year? So that's a little hard to answer because last year was our first year with our consortium. So when, the reason we went to the consortium is because, um, we were looking, if we were on our own, we were looking at almost twenty percent increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they were, and they were going up eleven percent then?
Um, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
What's the dollar saving?
Um, well.
Thank you.
Um, I really did not calculate it. Let's, an average. We, we spend about two hundred thousand dollars on health premiums every month. That's what we spend, or what we sent to Security Health. So about two point four million times a eight percent decrease, that's kinda what you're saving. I can calculate it real quick. What? Oh, go ahead, I know you do that. So, yeah, I can still answer questions. Two point four million times eight percent.
Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions?
All right, we're just, an observationist, the, thank you for, you know, with you and the consortium, working hard to get that, you know?
That's huge.
And we also gotta congratulate our employees and staff, the wellness activities that have taken place and just, you know, use of the healthcare system and, you know, our staff certainly with that loss ratio, yeah, influencing our, our rates there to be commended as well.
It's about a hundred ninety-two thousand. Yeah, you got it. Hundred ninety-two thousand for the camera.
Yeah.
Okay.
And when is this going to affect?
Oh, July one.
This, okay.
Yeah, July one, yep.
And that hundred ninety-two thousand is just our savings on our side.
Correct.
And you times that by two when you look at the savings for, well, not necessarily direct.
Well, the employees' paychecks will be, they'll notice a difference.
They'll notice a difference as well, yep.
Yeah.
So that's good news.
Yeah, it is really good news. And I haven't talked to the staff at all yet, so they don't even really know anything's coming yet, so. Well, they will now, so. Okay, um, I'll go on to the next item, our audit firm change. I think I talked to you a couple of months back regarding our audit. I was very, um, I was not pleased at all with the way our audit was handled last year, so we, um, we decided to go out for bid. There were, um, we sent out a request for proposal and two CPA firms actually, uh, submitted a proposal. Clifton Larson Allen LLP, which is CLA for short, and Hawkins Ash CPAs. Both of these four, I, I know these firms very well and they are both very, very good when it comes to governmental audits. I would be happy with either one of them. So when we looked at the bids and we compared the bids, CLA was the low bid. Uh, they quoted, um, seventeen thousand for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, seventeen two fifty, two thousand twenty-one seventeen five hundred, membership audit twenty-five hundred. And the capital asset schedule, which we're required to maintain, is seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now, when we were with, um, Whitley, they, they actually gave us, uh, they charged us a, a normal bid, but then they, uh, charged us all their operating costs as well. So their travel costs, so there's always these extra costs that were always embedded into their, into their invoice. Uh, when I sent out the request for proposal, I was very specific indicating I wanted one bid and that's all I'm paying them. So this is a significant, um, savings. I think we were close to twenty-four thousand, um, last year. So, and, and, and I'm going to be, full disclosure here, uh, CLA used to be Schenck. They actually, Schenck actually merged into CLA and that's the firm I worked for, um, ten years ago. So, um, I'm assuming, I, I actually know the shareholders. They're very, very good, um, so I'm a little nervous that, that they might find something. So they will begin.
To leave on good terms?
I know, I know, I'm a little nervous.
She'll find out. No, we'll find out.
No, that was the question everybody wanted to ask.
So we'll see, we'll see what, they're gonna begin their, um, preliminary work in, in June, so. Any questions on that?
Just the one.
Yeah, okay.
Good work, thank you.
Okay, the last item was the workers' compensation mod rate. And every year around this time, uh, the Wisconsin Compensation Rating Bureau releases our experience modification and that's a direct relation to our workers' comp premium insurance that we pay. Now, those premiums are not released until May. So I don't know, um, what, what our new premium is going to be. But since our mod rate, um, let me go back. The mod rate experience is, is indicated in, um, a one point zero zero, which is the average across the state. So if your, if your mod rate is one point zero zero, you're gonna pay the average workers' comp premium amount, okay? If your mod rate is one point six four, you're gonna be paying point six four more in insurance premiums for your Wisconsin, for your workers' comp insurance uh, because you are, your experience is so horrible. You've had a lot of claims, you've had a lot of high, high claims. So we want our mod rate below one. Um, and this year, our mod rate is, uh, was released at point eight two. So, and that's a drop from one point zero six. The point eight two is the lowest it's been since I've been here. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm predicting a pretty significant decrease. I don't know how much it is. Uh, but when I met with my insurance, insurance guy, I told him, I actually told him I'm expecting a very significant decrease and he agreed with me. So, um, those will be released in May and I believe in May is when I give you guys an insurance, um, update on, on all of the premiums and, um, the type of a property insurance that we.
What do we pay now, roughly?
Uh, let me see, um, less than a hundred thousand. And that's not just workers' comp, that is all of our insurance. Our automobile, our property and liability, all of it. So, but let me see. For just our workers', um, comp, we paid seventy-five thousand, three seventy-nine, and two thousand eighteen nineteen. And then seventeen eighteen, we paid ninety-seven thousand, seven thirteen. So when we had a mod rate decrease of about twenty-two, point two-two, it was a twenty-two percent decrease. So we went from ninety-seven to seventy-five. So I'm expecting that again. I'm expecting, shoot, fifty-five maybe?
Well, it's a pretty good meeting so far.
Pretty good meeting so far. Good news.
Well, just wait. So, um, I just wanted to give you an update on that and when, and I think it's, I think it's OE, um, thirteen. I think it's OE, um, thirteen, the facilities management, that's when I really go over all the property insurance. So I will be coming back to you on that. I also wanted to mention that, um, I didn't know it's not on my sheet, but I also wanted to mention that I, I think last month I mentioned we were talking about, uh, technology meetings and we had like a postmortem meeting after our network failure. Uh, we had another meeting this past week and, um, we now have a roadmap of, uh, preventing something like this from ever happening again. So what I wanted to do, or I, I actually invited Hartland in our technology department to come to the board meeting in May to give a short presentation on what our roadmap will look like. So I hope that's okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
That's it.
Thank you very much on that, good news.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, why don't we move right on with, with Tahrir?
Okay.
And Lynn, if you wanna.
Yes.
Take the, introduce some.
Um, Judy Cameron is here from Tahrir and we thought, since this was our, since this was our first year with Tahrir, we thought it would be a good idea for Judy to come and just give a little update.
Good to see you Judy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Certainly, uh, we always enjoy, um, this time of year, rest time, well, when you come and get a report card. Um, and I have to tell you, I'm thrilled to be sitting at this meeting too because so many times you don't listen to board reports that are so many positive things, you know, and it goes. So that's encouraging as well. Um, the first year for us is exactly that, a first year. And I often tell all of our staff that, um, we're glad that there is only one first year because, um, it is a, a work in progress. Um, we have to get used to the systems that are in place in the district. Um, and obviously the, the bid process itself is, um, the school district putting together the data in their RFP. Um, the way DPI requests that you put it together, it's based on half the statistics from the prior year. Um, in a short, really walkthrough, you can see only what you can see. And then you're putting together a package, um, based on, you know, prior experience and what's worked other places. Certainly that's not to say that, that, um, because we don't believe a cookie cutter works, that there won't be some surprises along the way. Um, but it all starts to with the staff and certainly, um, although we had a few bumpy roads initially trying to get all the things lined up, um, I think we finally got there. And so, um, you know, certainly to their credit, they've, um, learned to read recipes and use our production records. And, um, uh, even if the recipe didn't work in the beginning of the year, they figured out what they were, what we could help them do wrong, um, and right. I know Matt made the comment that, um, he does, it is nice to have other departments that he can call and ask a question to, so that could be the payroll, uh, nutritionist or whatever. And so you don't feel like you're so much out there on an island. Um, basically from the standpoint of middle school and high school, um, obviously, um, we added a variety of entree selections. Pizza's always popular and our diner station is things like hamburgers, cheeseburgers, chicken sandwiches, um, things like that, that just give kids another choice. Those two, uh, I think critical here too because, um, you have an open campus. And so when kids can leave, um, our challenge is to get everybody up to speed so that you can at least hopefully try, um, you know, to get them to stay and eat at school. One of the challenges here though, obviously, is, um, the change to the one lunchtime and then basically you still only have so much space. And so, um, even if, if we could figure out a way to get more kids to eat, you still have the challenge of trying to, you know, give them, um, the space because it is, it is what it is. Um, that part was a little bit different than we anticipated, but that combined with the first year, we just make some decisions now and as we look at year two, can configure menus maybe a little bit differently, um, too. Um, Chef Josh was here and, um, did a featured event. And then, um, Matt, um, certainly too, did some of the, what we call our creation station things, which, um, really give kids a chance to build their own, if you would, um, just with the basic recipe. And in all buildings, although the high school was the biggest change, we really try to configure lines for speed of service. Um, one of the things, um, that we've experimented this year and we'll use next year's, the new Benito Box craze, if you would. Um, if you really watch elementary school kids too, when we all grew up, um, we ate meals. So you enjoyed a full sandwich and you, you know, the vegetables and the fruits. Now you watch kids and even with what they burn from home, or they do almost more snacking. And so one of our most, um, or highest and most popular kids' meals is really the one where we use the pretzels and the cheese cubes. And it's the one where we get the most, um, negative feedback from adults because it just looks like we're not giving the kids enough food. And it complies because they're still going through the fruit and vegetable bar. Um, but it fits their snacking mentality, if you would. So we've been doing a lot of experimenting with all kinds of different, um, things. The container has like four different squares. They can pick it up with their milk and go, um, both vegetable bar, but it's a lot quicker too. And that, obviously, we know that when kids stand in line, they get discouraged and then it takes either either talk time, playtime or both. So we're really conscious of, of that regard. We obviously, um, are, are a part of our Harvest of the Month and educating kids on different fruits and vegetables, herbs, um, that they may not be accustomed to. It can come from displays, menu items, tastes of certain things. Um, along with that, we actually have a Healthy to a T newsletter that goes on the website. Um, our dietitian, um, does a feature each month. And then of one of the items, be it the fruit, the vegetable or, um, herb, there's a home style recipe. So, um, certainly that, that folks at home could actually get a fix of it for a family size recipe besides. So it kind of starts to tie it all, um, together, if you would. Um, we did, um, add our Food for Life website, um, to be part of your website for food service. So again, one spot for menus, um, some different links that they can come from the, from our dietitians and nutritionists. That's also where the Healthy to a T newsletter is. And then our featured, um, fact sheets for each of the fruit, vegetable, or, um, herb of the month too. Uh, we did change the software so that, um, kids can, can, the high school can buy a la carte. That will be, uh, a focus, although we are conscious of the negative balance policy and making sure that kids, um, don't rack up a balance just because they want something to supplement their lunch. Um, so there's a fine line between getting the kids that really do want to supplement their lunch and should be able to, because we know that most of them have learned how to spend money. Um, and at the high school anyway, compared to those that really can't and then just walk through and keep charging, um, and so the balance grows. Low balance policy has helped, um, so at least that regard from the whole financial should be better, um, at the, you know, this year compared to where you were, um, on your own. We obviously, uh, part of our charge is to financially watch the program. And so, um, Jim Madden, our district manager, in combination with Matt and the staff, really take monthly inventory. Um, we get the reports from Lynn in her office and match them with where we are. So we really have, um, although we're lining them up, but we can really check participation and, and from an inventory staff, what made good business decisions to get closer to where we're supposed to be. More free reduced, um, um, families did sign up and obviously we talked about several of your issues prior to starting. And then between Jim and Lynn, certainly they came up with some different things they felt with work, um, so that we're, we could get more of that because that, that helps the district all the way around. Food service, but certainly a lot of your other funding, um, besides. And, and really I'll reiterate again that the staff, um, although, um, not too sure that they thought this was gonna be a good decision, um, they really come to realize, certainly they didn't, they had made some changes, uh, but they didn't lose anything, at least from a personal income standpoint, by the time we got it all lined up. Different, yes. Um, so they really have been more than supportive. And, um, as we go through with the cookie now into year two, um, you know, we should be able to, to kind of continue to climb our mountain, if you would, um, and make changes that we need.
And we're continuing to look at, um, the, the processes in our offices too. Diana and I are always looking to see what we can change in regards to collecting the income. So this year, we sent everybody to collections that was overdrawn by a hundred dollars or more. Next year, it's gonna be fifty dollars or more. So we're slowly getting that, uh, to a point where we're not gonna have anybody that's gonna be overdrawn. We're also, Matt and I are also looking at an alternative meal, um, maybe, um, so, cause we don't want to encourage, we don't want to encourage kids to eat that are not paying for it. So we're gonna, we're gonna get some options together and we're gonna bring them to the board and we're gonna have a recommendation. So if the board chooses not to look at that, that's fine, but at least, you know, we've done our due diligence to give you the options to give students an additional or an alternative meal to save on the school nutrition end. Because the school nutrition end right now is funding those, those meals, so that are not being paid.
You're not alone.
Oh, I know.
No, and one, there's a, there, again, there's a fine line because you certainly don't want to make, you want to make sure the kids get to eat. Except most often in our society today, unless there's a consequence of some kind, um, it just keeps building. And so you kind of have to hit that happy medium, um, that you're comfortable with.
Right.
To make sure that there's accountability where there needs to be the accountability and then certainly that we don't have kids going hungry.
And the lunch prices will be coming to you next month.
Yes, sorry. We'll be working on the budget and.
Yeah.
As I said, that's all part of the lunch prices and everything else for next year.
So I got a quick question. So could you talk a little bit about the, the feedback we're getting from kids? I mean, I love this idea because I do think, you know, we're, we're eating differently today, especially the young people. But so how are we collecting feedback? I'll talk to some kids at the high schools I'm walking through and they're like, ah. I mean, are we getting that feedback so? And I'm, I know that all kids are gonna not like a meal here and there, but how much feedback are we getting so that we? And I know they've got choices, so that helps, but.
One of the things that is difficult in that first year, by the time we're trying to balance everything else is to get. We do a lot of, um, surveys using surveymonkey.com. Um, and so, um, I can probably recommend that Jim and, and Matt and Lynn sit down and, and we'll, we've got some standard questions that tend to, to, um, you know, work very well to get some feedback. Um, another option might be that we enlist the help of the student council. And they can be our warriors, if you would, to, to, um.
They'll be cool.
You know, go out and, and could be a business class, um, you know, there's a lot of different options. Certainly kids with kids will be more honest and then you kind of can get the feedback. And then, you know, some of the time their, um, issue really is around something they don't understand. And so then you can kind of get the message out to explain why we're doing certain things. Um, it's probably because the regulations say we have to, um, compared to going downtown and they see something totally different, particularly at the high school. Um, surveys and we, like I said, the two probably most successful, um, are in those regards. And then the other, if there's a way, we talk about a food focus group. Um, and that can be actually in all buildings, a combination of, of kids that really just come together and we have some questions and, you know, same difference there. They can, they can be, um, help us get the message across and, and get student feedback too.
Good. That'd be great.
We'll put that on the list and make sure that, um. And, and the fun part of doing it, some of it right now, is the fact that then you can use that as a benchmark as you go forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because over the summer you can plan for, if there was one glaring thing, let's say that they missed and we just didn't even know it existed, then you can work to, you know, bring it into the system and, and get off the right foot.
Have you had any luck in raising the participation rates?
Um, a couple, three challenges for this year. Um, certainly when we look at just numbers, um, we, we're conscious of the fact that general went down, so we use percentages. Um, to your point on snow days, um, that in our world wasn't much fun this year at all. Um, because then the other piece is, in some cases, we don't necessarily think, even if you were here, all kids got to school necessarily all the time either. So our, our averages this year, and not just here, but a lot of places are really skewed. Based on everything and the change that we didn't anticipate with trying to get, um, the space and the one lunchtime and the more, we call more open campus in order, we're pretty much held our own. So considering all the obstacles, um, although we'd like to really increase it, we'll take that as a win for the first year and then build on that.
Very good, very good.
And we'll continue to work on the free and reduced forms.
Yeah.
So I know Diana does a great job of holding it on.
Well, that takes, and that takes everybody too.
Oh, it takes a lot of time too.
So, but thank you, yeah, for your work, cause that is huge to make, get that to, to where it is. Any other comments? I mean, I really applaud the, the, uh, the, the folks that were here in transition because I really, I mean, they've been troopers. I, I haven't, and I, I don't know, has the board gotten feedback?
You know, they, it was a challenge and I think they were, you know, somewhat reluctant at the beginning of the year. But again, I think you, you, the people have adapted and, and are really work, you know, they're here for our kids. And that's, that's what they were here for before and I think that's why they're still here now.
Absolutely.
They have a connection with those kids and, uh, that's so, that's so important, so. I want to thank you very much for taking the time to come down here tonight.
And certainly thank you to the, the board and everybody for the support and making the decision in the first place. Because I know, um, you certainly went through and had a lot of discussion and, and before you made the decision, you did it lightly, that's for sure.
Yep, it was a very, very tough decision, but, you know, we're glad that you're there, you're doing what you're doing right now. And we wish you luck going in, you know, finishing this year up strong and going in the next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thanks for coming down.
Good.
The what?
Make sure we don't, that one, that'll stay, right?
The creation station really was popular.
Well, if you think about even just all of us, we like to make it the way we like to make it too, so, you know.
Can you give an example, what is a creation?
So if you said like, um, well, another way to say it could be like, build, build your own burger. So we're gonna have the burger and you're gonna do whatever else you want to with it.
Oh, I like that.
Pasta bar.
Onions.
I want onions.
So we have a couple of different pastas, um, different sauces, um, so you could, it wouldn't be just red sauce. If you like white sauce, then you take the white sauce. Um, one of the others, and I'm not sure that we've done it here yet, but it's even just a, a macaroni and cheese bar. And so different cheese sauces with, you know.
Yeah.
So really, creation meaning the customer creates what they want, um, popping a baked tails and other.
Yeah.
Um, we give them certain ingredients and we don't care what they put on it, they can choose.
Are you willing to extend that to middle school or not?
Actually, um, I'll talk to Jim because I think, yes, there's, um, we get hung up sometime on station names, if you would. Um, we just have to figure out how to get kids through, but we certainly can, um, take out certain things and put other things in to do that too.
And I also want to thank Tahrir as well. We have a student at the high school, an eighteen to twenty-one year old program. And they're here with us to provide him a job experience opportunity over at the middle school. And it is going very well. He is loving working with the staff and the job. So I thank you very much for partnering to give our students with disabilities job experiences.
Well, that's always a win-win.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You like that the middle school, it's fun to see them.
That is cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is neat. Thanks for sharing that, Brian.
And as in your, in your note here, you mentioned Chef's Matt, you know, working with our staff and working with the different programs and we're fortunate for that opportunity to have that. So thank you for that, for that.
Well, our motto really is, certainly if it isn't broken, we're not gonna fix it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna make sure that we change and add to the things that are already there. We're just, you know, and I think that certainly tends to be the fear of the staff in the very beginning. Um, they really feel like the decision means they weren't doing a good job. To your point on being here for the kids, instead of the fact that we're just gonna make it better for the kids and we're gonna help them do that. Um, and like I said, after they get through that first year, it's just a breath of, we made it and now we know exactly what to expect and they do it, so do we, quite honestly, so.
Well, we can't be experts at anything as a district, so, I mean, yeah. So we're looking forward to see where it goes.
It's unfortunate sometime that, that the regulations force, um, such a tedious process to get to this point. Um, and, and, well, and the decision, you, cause you gotta kind of get from where you were to, over to, to the side. Because to your point, you really need to focus on education, which is where you're the experts and certainly we're not, and we're the food service experts and then collectively together, it just gets better.
Yeah, well, thank you. And thank you Lynn for all that. So what you're saying, it wasn't just a cakewalk.
No, no.
Is that a pun?
A pun.
A pun, a cakewalk.
Thanks Judy. Talk to you soon.
Thank you. Um. Do you want to, Mr. Johnson, or do you need to present somebody for the technical excellence scholarship?
Adrian Rodriguez, who's listed on your, um, your agenda. He's going to be going to Mid State Technical College for, for IT. And he is the recommendation.
Very good.
For a hootle.
I would like to call for a motion to approve the technical excellence scholarship recipient as presented.
So move.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, endowment fund update.
All right.
Three minutes.
I got, I'm gonna do it in one. So here is, uh, and, and I've shared this over the year. So, here is, and I've shared this over the years in board updates. But here is a list of those folks in the district that have taken advantage of the endowment fund. We have about forty-five thousand dollars and it's explained in here. Forty-five thousand set aside to use the interest yearly to give away grant awards, scholarship awards to folks that are looking to do something creative or need dollars to fulfill a project that they might be working on. So, we've had several folks and the people are starting to get in the habit of, you know, looking at this as a resource. On the other side of it, we need to continue to focus at growing it. So, how do we get a group of people together that really can manage this fund and grow this fund? And, you know, continue to increase the amount that we can give away to create great opportunities for our kids. So, less than three minutes. Any questions?
Thank you very much for the update and the list here.
It's exciting.
Yeah. It's good to see people.
So, it's very short and sweet. As you can see, this is the grant, the application, that's it. And then folks have to reflect on it. So, you get to see everything that gets submitted and then what the folks say about the experience. So, we're trying to make it very user-friendly. That's it.
I would propose that some, somebody utilizing this grant, come and make a presentation to the board about their experience.
That'd be wonderful for a showcase.
Very good.
Thank you. Diana, you got that?
Thank you, Carrie. Board member monitoring responsi-, we're going to move into policy governance. It's a fairly easy month. Board member monitoring responsibility. Essentially, the policy outlines the expectations that we have as board members to monitor each of our own, each of our behaviors. Self-enforcing, if something happened during a meeting, we may stop the meeting and stop that line or address it afterward. This was sent out to all board members and there were no, no violations. And there were no violations noted throughout last year. We had, and I got to commend our board members for that, for acting in a very, very, at a very high level and exercising that fiduciary responsibility that we have as board members. So, thank you. And with that, I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP twelve, board member monitoring.
So, move.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. GP five, board, essentially is board officers. And it outlines the responsibilities of the president, the vice president, the treasurer, and clerk, all the way down the line. And then also the...
Student representative.
Student representative, but also the creation of committees and other designated subgroups. And again, this was, it's really just definitions of the positions, fairly straightforward. This was emailed out to all, all board members. There were no violations noted. I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP five, board officers.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. That completes our work with policy governance. This is probably the easiest month of policy governance that we've had, I think, in twelve months.
I agree.
Yes, yes. Consent agenda. Mr...
Let's have Mr. Spray speak to it.
I want.
Oh, sorry.
Can you let Cody go over the donations first?
Well, absolutely. Sure. All right, so for donations of this month, we have Kathy Mills from Arti Garage donated the proceeds of the performance as you like it by Billy Shakespeare and the mount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Chicago tour trip. So, thank you, Kathy. And then Backpack for Kids, they have four hundred dollars from Lake Arrowhead, ninety from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, three bags of food and sixty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church as well. And then many bags of food donated by Sacred Heart Church, and then seventy packages of ramen noodles from Joanne Walton. So, thank you to those donors.
Yeah, thank you very much and thank you, Cody. And then with regards to...
Did you want to?
No, you can go.
Well, I, can I, before that, Keith, where are we at with the Chicago tour trip?
Well, people still want to give money, we'll still take it.
So, students are still looking for dollars?
Well, students are, all the students that went came up with at minimum half of the cost. And that was what I had worked out. Any student that had approached me earlier before the trip, the, you know, it was three hundred dollars. You had to come up with, it could be through fundraising. What happened was, Mr. Siple and I had talked about, yeah, through the various fundraisers, you could raise probably three hundred dollars as an amount that was reasonable. So, or a family could, you know, and we had some families that did, you know, they ended up giving part of it just to get it up to that three hundred. So, then we had about twenty-six hundred that we raised and I'm still searching for about a thousand, so. Yeah, so, make those checks out to Nacusa High School.
All right.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Sponsoring a student.
Yeah.
We're sponsoring a student and they, I mean, it was a fantastic experience for them, so.
And that would be another probably showcase opportunity.
That should be great.
All right, so John's going to talk about Jeannie Peterson?
I'd love to talk about Jeannie Peterson. Jeannie Peterson has been a cornerstone for our building and our district for, I forgot how many years right now, but as well as...
Close to thirty, hasn't it?
Yeah. And over the course of her time, but again, I guess elaborate a little bit on that. She's been a cornerstone for our building and our district and our community for about thirty years. And her, she's joining her husband Eric, who retired a couple of years ago. And she has served our district in many capacities, but the bulk of her time has been at Humke. And she served as a third grade teacher. She helped coordinate and start STEM, CWSA. And she also, prior to that, had spent time as a health teacher and worked part-time at that time, stayed home a little bit with her kids during that time. She's a creative force, you know, one of the things that, meeting with the members of her team, the thing that they're going to miss a lot about, they're going to miss a lot of things about her. But she's the one who's the organizer, the developer, the leader, who kind of brings everything together and moves everybody forward. So, you know, she'll be missed in many capacities. We appreciate who she is and what she's done to serve the students of Nacusa.
Jeannie also took care of the gardens in front, too. She was a very huge part of getting water in the front. So, I remember that, so I'm going to miss her.
And maybe we can get her to come back and help with the gardens.
She's helping with my garden.
That's true, that's right. The community garden.
The community garden. She said she'd help with that, so I'm like, yes, someone that actually likes this stuff, because I don't.
Also a passionate advocate for science and finding ways to make that work in all parts of the curriculum. Certainly, we're not where we're at without her work on that.
Thank you, Jeannie.
I had one more. She was a phenomenal coach for cross-country and track. I had her in middle school for seven years.
Oh, really?
And I still remember some of those drills and techniques, so thank you, Jeannie, for all the athletic support as well and coaching.
Jeannie, as you move into the next, you know, I want to sincerely thank you for your last, for the time you've given to Nacusa. But we surely hope that this next chapter in your life is enjoyable. But thank you for your time here. Let's give her a big round of applause.
She'll be missed, indeed, John. Thank you. All right, Rachel.
Well, we also have a resignation. There's, Rachel was only with us for two years, so nowhere enough time to build up all the same amount of work there. But in those two years, she, Rachel has been a passionate advocate for kids. She loves them. And, you know, I'm always finding sixth graders from last year who are still seeking her out and interacting with her. She is basic, I appreciate the professionalism she brings, especially as we have a relatively new fifth grade team coalescing. She was a real anchor, really helped get a lot of the routines and really just finds ways to make support kids wherever they're at. And, you know, simply put, she is a consummate professional, but she's also absolutely, the kids know she's in her, she's got their back and she's in it for them. You know, that's one of the big reasons why they respond so well to her. So, we certainly, she's worked tirelessly on the, on our MTSS committee, working to sort of help build out various routines in our school to help make it a safer place and, you know, just, she's brought a lot to the building. We're grateful for the opportunity to have worked with her over the last two years.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Geesey, I have something to say right on.
Yeah.
Depp Totsky is, has retired as well. And I know she's no longer an employee of the district, but she has been for years and years and years. So, her last day was last Friday and I just found out today. So, I just wanted to make sure that we get a shout-out to Depp.
Yeah.
Because I remember when I put Depp in that coordinator position at the middle school and she was so unsure of herself. And she turned out to be a phenomenal coordinator. She, circumstances have changed. She was going to retire at the end of the year, but circumstances in her life has changed and her family that she was able to retire on Friday. So, I just want to thank her for all her years of service. I really appreciated her, so. And she'll be back someday.
Well, fantastic. So, we will miss her, but, yeah. So, thank you for, Lynn, for bringing that up.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, move. Second.
And we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Future agenda items, we're having a board workshop this Thursday at six P.M. We need to look at our financial situation. That's something that we as a district have been working on. It's, it's, this is, you know, I think we've talked about it. We passed a budget that was in the red this year. And, you know, we as a district will need to do a lot of work to be ready for the future. So, that's going to be this Thursday. Board workshop, May sixteenth, then we have our board workshop meeting, May twenty-first. And next month, the meeting will begin at six, six P.M., board reorganization. And that brings us to the next part here of this evening. We need to recognize an individual sitting to my right, Mr. Doug Huestead. Doug has served nine years in the Nacusa School Board, if I'm not correct. You kind of were my role model when I came in. Quiet, reserved, always well thought, you know, and you're going to be sorely missed. You always had that fifty-thousand-foot level and that ability to really look at things as a whole. And also, as a community member, you brought so much of that to the school board, you know, and that's going to be missed. We'd like to present this plaque. Here, you want to? It's a certificate of appreciation, commendation, actually, if you don't put nothing.
Not just appreciation.
Yeah, this is better than appreciation, this is a commend-, commendation. Service from two thousand and ten, two thousand and nineteen. We certainly wish you well and, you know, I'm kind of jealous a little bit, you know. But you, you, you were instrumental in bringing policy governance online. You've done it while you were board president. And certainly that has brought us really into the twenty-first century, I think, with regards to how we operate the board, so.
Give it up.
Thank you. I've, I've enjoyed my time on the board and I, I thank the community for, for electing me for three terms. So, it was a great experience. I wouldn't, I wouldn't pass it up for anything. Went through a lot of changes in the district, was able to sit on a board with just awesome board members. You're all just awesome. And, you know, we've done a lot of good work here and I know that you guys will continue to do great work. So, I think the district's in really good shape and, and, you know, you should be excited. I'm excited for things to come in the future too, but, but yeah, it's been a really good experience and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Doug. Now, why aren't you sitting out on that end now?
Okay.
Giving us trouble.
I don't know about the trouble part.
Well, we got to, we got to have some excitement. And I also, we'll take that to any, Mr., we want to, there's, there's some confusion as to the election results. A board member that was elected is Mr. David Schmidt. Dave will be, what, taking the oath, or April twenty-second is when you're going to be assuming your official board responsibilities. And the first, well, if we, if you can, we'd like you to be at the workshop on Thursday. And the workshop then before the, the main meeting, May sixteen. But, you know, again, I was fortunate to work with you for six years too. I'm glad you're back, so we're going, we're going, it's going to work well. Lot of, lot of stuff going on. Future agenda items, we got that. Got that. Okay. At this time, any comments, any questions, concerns? We're going to be moving into closed session. Call for consideration of a motion to adjourn and enclose session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one-C of the Wisconsin statutes. Consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss the possibility of reduction, reduction in hours of an employee. Motion on the floor.
I move to adjourn into closed session.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Huestead.
Yes.
Brian Mahan.
Yes.
I go, yes. Cody Gobelski.
Yes.
Brian Geesey.
Yes. When you started your motion, Brian, to it, it started, you know, you used the word adjourn. I was like, we aren't getting you.